Can you guys hear me?
I can hear you.
Okay, I can't hear you guys. I didn't hear the. Okay. Maybe it's fixed.
I didn't hear the pledge of allegiance either.
Oh, okay.
I think they've got the audio muted on the feed. Because I can hear you, Gary, but I can't hear the room.
Great.
Does someone have Patricia's?
I do.
Texter.
I think we have a short video if it plays. This is the promotional video that we have that we just recently recorded with Brian inviting you to attend.
My name is Brian Donahue. I'm from the city of San Antonio. I'm the honoree for the Americana Awards. And on March 11th, we're going to have a big party at Disneyland Hotel. We invite you to join us. It's going to be a great evening of fun. You'll see a lot of people there. We'll be honored and you'll get to enjoy the evening with us. We would love to have you show.
We heard the man. Be there. Join us on March 11th. We get back to the next slide. I know we had to do a bit of a changeover in the slide, so thank you for accommodating us with the presentation. So the event is on March 11th at the Disneyland Hotel. We have an incredible silent and live auction. We have an incredible opportunity drawing and dinner, but most importantly, it gives you the opportunity to honor one of your own. Brian Donahue to be able to honor all the things that he has done in the community. The opportunity drawing includes a pair of electric bicycles and a lot of other prizes valued at over $10,000. And Mr. Donahue, would you like to come up and add a couple of things to this presentation as we say thank you to you?
Well, yeah, sure. Thank you very much. It's really amazing to be recognized for doing things that you love to do. Doesn't happen that often, but you know, all the times I've been here in the city, all the times I've worked with all of the people in the city. And those are the ones that really helped me the most is the staff at this city and the staff, the boys and girls club. And the group and the foundation, they're the ones that made me do stuff. I didn't make them do something. So it worked out very well and I'm so pleased that we're being recognized for the things that we've done here. It's been the car show, the repair breakfast and the foundation and all the other stuff. So I would encourage you, if you had the time, watch 11. Is function at the Disneyland Hotel. Please show up if you wish. Enjoy it with us and we really appreciate it. And I appreciate all of you so much for putting this together for me. And Dave, thank you for suggesting that I do this. I appreciate it. You're very good. As you notice, Dave and I have our outdated jackets, so that's not important. Thank you so much for being here. I appreciate you very much.
Thank you, Brian. I also want to make sure that we also thank our city committee. You have made this even here. And made this and the committee are instrumental in helping to choose our citizens of the year every year. So thank you so much, Davis, and thank you to the committee for selecting Brian.
Thank you. We'll move on to the consent calendar. Oh, wait. No, it's always good because you're bringing that one for this from cycle.
Always, always. Good evening, everyone. Eric O'Donnell, the council public affairs, the city, state, and federal legislative advocate. Good to see everyone here in the new year. I'll jump right in here and start talking about the latest and greatest in Sacramento. As the mayor said, the legislature returned officially on January 4th. It's packed full time in their session, first year, two year session in Sacramento. I mentioned last year, we had a lot of brand new legislators. That is so true. About one fourth turnover, excuse me, up there. The bill introduction deadline right now is February 17th. About 500 bills have been introduced so far. Over half of those are either budget bills or spot bills, which are bills that don't have a lot of language in it. They're pretty much placeholders, if you will. We're going to have about 2,000 more before that deadline. It gets pretty crazy. The closer you get to that deadline, the more bills get introduced. That last week will have over a thousand for sure. So there's a lot of bills to be reading through, a lot of bills to analyze and pass to the city. And we'll certainly keep you updated. I wanted to mention quickly on the COVID-19 parameters. This is the first year we're going into a session since 2020 without COVID-19 parameters in legislative law. That's a big deal. What I mean by that are a lot of legislative offices, their staffs have been hybrid for the last three years. This is the first year where they're all back in the office. All of their doors are unlocked in the Capitol. That was a key safety point. The Capitol is a public building and everyone should be welcome wherever they want to go. This is the first year all doors will be unlocked and green and ready to go in and conduct business that way. So it's an exciting sign in Sacramento. Everyone feels like it's getting a little bit back to normal. Some of the state agencies are still hybrid, still having a lot of their employees working from home. But I expect there'll be some sort of balancing of that. I wanted to talk briefly about the governor's January budget proposal. What's the biggest piece of news in the last couple of months? This is one of my favorite slides every time the governor has a budget announcement. I think this is a very, very, very unpacked whole slide. You can see where on his proposal, which is just the first step in a multi-step process for our budget here in California, which won't be adopted until June. But this is his initial proposal of what we've seen so far in the sales tax we've seen. You can see over, if anyone ever asks you, what do we do with our money here in California? That's it right there. About 50% of all of our money goes straight into education, K through 12 and higher education. And then another significant portion that's been rising lately is that health function there. About a quarter of our state budget goes into state health programs. A lot of that is a major Medicare expansion that the governor's champion lost several years. That expands coverage to all low-income individuals, no matter immigration status. That was a big campaign pledge of this. So about 75% of the budget, education and healthcare, right there. Everything else is very small, as you can see. And I want to point out that human services, piece of the pie, that's 8.6%. That's where all the housing and homelessness money is that can triple down on cities. So that is a target of ours, working with your cities to have to figure out how we can unlock some of that money, unlock some of those programs for the city. For your various projects, including to the city. Moving on to the new degree, this total budget that he proposes is 297 million. It's about a couple of percentage points less than last year's budget. General fund, 223.6. Everything else will be special funds, so special taxes or bond funds or federal funds or anything like that. And our shortfall, our deficit that we're looking at is $22.5 billion in California. You might say, how is that possible? Last year I was here saying we had a $100 billion surplus. That's right. That's accurate. So we had a 120-something billion dollar swing in the last 12 months here in California when it comes to our revenues. The main reason for that is the percentage of our personal income tax that came from capital gains is at 5.5% right now. Last year at this time, it was 9.75%. That's the entire ballgame right there in terms of how much difference that capital gains tax makes in California's budget. Just that 4% is 120 billion roughly. When it comes to how this affects our funding this year, so I know we've always worked with staffing and council on state budget DMR, state budget funding opportunities. City initial reports we're hearing from our friends on the committees and our budget chair friends. They're less likely to happen this year. However, they still recommend that everyone submits and everyone pushes on a full force. Because you never know what happens between now and June when we have our final numbers. At this time last year, we had a roughly $20 billion surplus and ended at 100, so a lot can happen between now and May. And June will be figured out the total budget details, but I will continue to keep you updated for now. A couple pieces of legislation I wanted to make the city aware of very briefly. Like I said, there's very few pieces that are introduced so far that are substance, but a couple, AB 23, a wider theme bill, amending proposition 47. We've seen that in the last couple of years. This seems to be a vehicle that might have some weight this year. That reduces the threshold amount for payback from $950, $400 in a 12-month cycle. That's a public safety tool that they've been looking for for a while to amend Prop 47. However, any amendments to Prop 47 would obviously have to go back to voters who voted Prop 47 in. First step and a long step, and I do expect a lot of other bills this year on Prop 47 reform. ACA1 Assembly Constitutional Amendments, what's that stands for? Will change the voting threshold for local affordable housing, public infrastructure, geo bonds and special taxes. So if he said he wants to do a local bond or special tax specifically for affordable housing or local infrastructure, so sewers, roads, public safety buildings, et cetera. That voting threshold would be down from 2/3 to 55%. So right now, school districts have that 55%, but cities and special districts do not. So this would put them on the same line, both as each other. And then as before, my senator winner from the Bay Area is a bill that expands our buy right housing mantra into developments that land as owned by religious institutions or institutions of higher education. So really trying to push that buy right housing into greater spheres in our end of the communities. And then I'd wanted to quickly mention that I do expect a reform bill this year on SB9, our lot splitting bill that we talked about. There was a Turner Center report that came out a couple of weeks ago. I'm not sure if anyone saw it, but it analyzed 12 cities nationwide or statewide who would be likely to use SB9 lot splitting in the last year. And it really came up with it's not being used nearly as much as people thought it was going to be. So SB9 is not going to be the solution for housing in California as many people thought it would be. So that being said, I do expect some legislation to come out of that and try to implement some policy changes to make sure SB9 is more more used than it is currently. And then with that, I'm happy to take any questions, but really quickly federally, there's not a ton going on right now in DC. But I will say that the next round of federal earmarks, which is not the same as the state earmarks in terms of the likelihood. I do expect federal earmarks to happen this year. The next round will be probably in March, April this year when application time will come. You'll remember that's the same process we use for the Orangewood Barquette funding last year that we secured. So I'm looking forward to looking with you guys that long, developing a project list for that and submitting it to our representatives in DC. With that, I'm happy to answer any question.
Eric, on ACA1, what was your threshold?
Can you repeat that?
Yes, the threshold for ACA1 is 50%. That's what's being suggested under the legal law. What is the threshold now?
Right now, it's 2/3 majority.
And also, how would that affect local government?
It would, the idea is to make it easier for local governments to tax and bond themselves to afford affordable housing and public infrastructure. So the idea is to allow local voters more to say than to be able to fund these things themselves. So reduces that threshold from 66% to 55. I would imagine that would make it easier for these to pass and more of these bonds and special taxes would pass for affordable housing and infrastructure.
Okay, so basically it's for funding?
It is for funding for public infrastructure.
Okay, thank you. Any questions?
You had mentioned that you would expect a reform on SB9 so that policy could be even more by the general public. I'd like to expand on that. Is that incentivizing it or making it even more lax than you're proposing?
That's a great question. I don't have an answer for that. I think just every time we see one of these reports that says it's not used the way they thought it was going to be, you can expect some legislator to look at that and say, let's fix it. So I would imagine the bills we see will be to either incentivize, like you said, or to remove what little control local governments have over it, which could be a reason why people are not using it now. But either way, the goal is more housing production for those types of jobs that are interested in that bill.
And I have a question regarding the federal earmarks. You had mentioned that March or April of this year would be when books should be submitting.
Submission deadline, yeah.
Since we locked the earmark for the Orangewood Barquette, do you think there's a still a likelihood that we would be competitive or feel to ask Coria to do something on our behalf?
I do, because Congressman Coria did not give you the $150 per Orangewood Barquette. That was a Congresswoman, no longer here. So I think you're in the clear there. You're in a brand new district, brand new legislator, and I think it's a good thing to be in this district right now.
How much strategy would you recommend so that we become prioritized for that?
Yeah, that's a good question. We've already, we're setting up a meeting right now with his office, with city staff to introduce the city to him. He's brand new. He's not brand new to the city because he's been around a long time, but brand new in this district to him. So we want to make sure he knows about our priorities, make sure he knows about our community. And then it's really a function of trying to make sure that he understands the impact of what our paths would be and really choosing the right paths, right? Choosing the right paths that make sense for him and make sense for his district and what his priorities are when it comes to different parts of his roughly central Orange County district.
I know that with Lilac Hall, we had asked for several things and they settled on a part, I guess, something that could be true anymore for our local generations. What would you recommend would be an asset that would likely get accepted or would be appealing for someone like Coria?
That's a good question. I would like to answer that after our meeting with him to ask him after that. I think there's nothing wrong with asking him what kind of projects he wants to see in his community. But I think anything that is public-facing of our issues right now, right? I know that potentially something around Tina Pacific or any other affordable housing is something that I know he's interested in. I know he's done a couple of housing earmarks in the past for his district and his district is, you know, I have to look at it again in terms of when to change. But a lot of Santa Ana, a lot of Anaheim, so I think that housing is a safe play, but also I think recreation is a great one and so can transportation if we have the right property.
Is there a ballpark amount you think would be?
Yeah, so in federal earmark process, the vast majority of earmarks were between 500,000 and 2 million. So 2 million seemed to be the very common earmark amount last year. It can go more, but it needs to be a very large and regional project for it to go more, but 2 million seemed to be the right number last year.
Councilmember Kirby.
Is there anything happening on rails or trails for rails or something like that?
Very non-use.
No, he's not. He's trying to reduce the feedback.
I'm not on mute.
Gary, hold on. We're going to get you started here.
Thank you. I could turn up my mic maybe. Can you hear me better? Okay. Rails for trails. Anything happening? Any money involved for that to help us out?
Yeah, it's a good question. Rails for trails has been something that we've been using as our state and federal budget requests for the last couple of years. So there's not a program that's very competitive. We've tried a couple of programs in the past with the city. I know we've applied to Urban Greening, a couple of other programs, ATP, to get that project. It doesn't seem to be a good fit for those. So we've tried to use the process to keep funding for race trails for trails, which typically has fewer loopholes and fewer restrictions. It's not as competitive in some ways. So there's no traditional program for it, but we are still trying to find solutions for it.
Okay, one more question. Care Court, is Orange County part of the test program?
Yeah, Orange County was one of the first. Good question. I think it was the first 12 counties that got the care board funding first in October, I believe. So they are one of the test counties for care board. And I don't know their status of that money or what's been happening since October, but I know that they were one of the first counties to test it because we were largely doing it in a large, in a way before, and we have a large staff and department of budget to be able to handle with a test case like that.
Thank you.
Gary, we do have the support of the Orange County Transit Authority, OCTA, so that's good. The rail, so just amount of funding and funding. As far as the permission, I think we're good to go. Okay? Go. Thank you. Okay, thank you, Eric. Thank you for your work. We'll move on to the consent calendar. These are items based directly everywhere that the guy has, so I achieve speaking rights. Anybody from the council, I'm calling.
I'll leave it.
Okay, roll call.
The motion by council member Warren, executive by Mayor Lieutenant Dan, of the municipal public hall. Council agency attorney member Taylor.
Yes.
Is there? Council agency attorney member Torres. Council agency attorney member Warren. Mayor Lieutenant Rice, Attorney General Man. Yes. And Mayor Chairman Chong.
Yes, item number seven, public hearings. This is consideration of audience during 2022. You're a year behind. I see you. You're in more control. Go ahead.
Good evening, Mayor. Members of the council, we have our building official, Conywin, who will present the item.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor and city council members. Thank you for giving me the opportunity to give you a brief overview of this triennial code adoption process. First, my name is Conywin, and I'm honored to be here as your designated building official. We have a strong team as your new consultant that oversee the building department. Mark Carneyhead is my counterpart and Richard Japan is the deputy building official. Strong people, hardworking and work. We're happy to service your city. I do also feel honored because I feel standing in front of my second home. I live in Westminster. My family and I actually spend more time on Building 39 than we do at Westminster Mall. So we're very familiar with the area. As for the, I personally give a shout out to Eric O'Donnell with the legislative updates. At the chapter level, we also following all the happening at the state level in terms of the building code. So he's correct regarding SB9. As a project consultant, most of the projects we see are ADUs. We get a few SB9, and I know some of the challenge on that, and I'll bet the farm that the legislators kind of override some of the building requirements to make it easier to use SB9. It's still a challenge for SB9 to work from my personal experience. It's a form of law. That's the only way that you can make it work. The interior ones are very tough. Anyways, that's my, that's just my opinion. As for the item before you this evening, every three years, the State of California, more specifically the Building Standing Commission, published a new set of Title 24 on the 3rd of July with effective date of January 1, 2023. This code, and that effective date is actually in all the codes. So Title 24 is comprised of 12 parts. It's listed at the top of page three in the staff report. For example, part two is the California Building Code and part nine is the California Fire Code. So in addition to adopting the latest codes and standards, both building and OCFA are recommending technical changes to the building code, the residential code, the electric code, and the fire code. For building, there's four changes and those are based on local climatic condition. State allows us to amend our code based on a local condition, which is seismic and standard wind condition. And the four amendments are listed in the staff report has to do with minimum class B roof. Has to do with the not allowing CMU foundation. And with that, OCFA also has amendments and on your behalf, we have to answer any question you may have regarding fire code amendments. And I'm here if you have a question on building code. With the approval, the second introduction, the codes and amendments will be effective on March 17th of this year. All the projects are in plan check now that was submitted in January 1, we still check it based on the new code. It's amendments that will be in effect in March 17th. So the window from now to then, we couldn't enforce the amendments, but we have to enforce the new code. Thank you.
Any questions from at this point? I have a couple of questions.
Please.
40% or portion of these requirements are taking away the ability for the city to control local government with the new stuff, because I know we're a year behind in this.
Are you a year behind?
Yeah, we're a year behind. These are 2022.
Also, they be.
So my concern is, is the state of California taking away more local control? Because what percent of these changes are being mandated are changes by the state of California versus us?
The modern codes is extension building code, residential code, and so forth, and that's doesn't have a national level. That's the modern code. California takes the modern code and they amend it based on a couple of things. Either the stakeholder covenant process and some of the new requirements actually from the legislative. For example, the agent in place that was codifying. Also, I think referring to the permanent expiration. In the past, it was three years. They made legislation that's increased it more. So we lose some of that control, but the idea is to increase housing, affordable housing. And you see that with other changes.
There's an interruption because I need to answer against the point of this. Who knows better what we need to do in our community than us?
I will be ready.
So why would we have somebody sitting in South So why would we have somebody sitting in Sacramento changing our local laws, regulations, building, and things going most times? Because there's so much at stake with this. I'm not saying, I don't want to do, I'm just tired of it. That's why I just learned earlier that I was concerned about how much it's shifting back the other way, away from local control.
Understood. Some of the changes weren't happy with it either, because it goes against the, the basic code, but there's, there's certain things that they do at the state level. And, and we, we tried to get involved by talking to some of the Assembly members and, hey, are you sure you want to do this? We have some concern. So we do that at the California Building Official Record for all the deals. Mr. O'Conne is correct. It's five hundred, but it'll be thousand before February seventeenth, and we have folks keeping an eye on that as well.
And everyone's really sad about this. Who has the government control and regulate all this? The guys in Sacramento that make the rules are us. Jurors for a burden that puts on our staff and local government, especially since we have our interest in a lot of the things that they dictate to us. Just a thought.
Thank you.
Now, I'd love so much better to give you a chance. Thank you. And thank you for your excellent report.
Thank you.
If we're gonna have the inspectors from the OCFA come up, that would be awesome.
Mr. Mayor, council members. My name is Tony Alamon. I'm an Assistant Bar Marshall with the Orange County Fire.
Mr. Mayor, I'm here for my hire.
Oh, sorry.
Thank you so much.
Mr. Mayor, council members. Pleasure to be here this evening. My name is Tony Alamon. I'm an Assistant Bar Marshall with the Orange County Fire Department.
You did a great job.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate that.
Couple of questions.
Turn it.
If I may, thank your service. Historically, we let some period of time where we let our, some of our inspections, we missed some of our inspections, and we had a catch-up period. Because of COVID, where are we in relation to inspections in Stanton? And is there a period of time that we're gonna have to get caught up in certain areas? There were, can we, it was kind of an update for my fellow council members.
Yeah, what I can do, Mr. Mayor, I don't have the specific numbers. I can have my office get you those numbers specifically and provide it in a staff report. I work out of our headquarters office in Irvine, so I don't have the local numbers here in Stanton. But you are correct, there were, you know, due to some of the restrictions with COVID, there were some businesses either that we were unable to get into because we didn't want to risk, you know, potentially exposing somebody or being exposed. So we are kind of in a catch-up mode right now. You know, the, the new workload is getting ready to be issued, not only to the fire prevention staff, but also our operations group. So there, there, there will be annual inspections conducted this year in the city.
I think one of the things that would help the council is that the number of cases that we are reacting versus the numbers that we're proactively. I think that would give us a really clear picture of where we are in our community. I think that's a good way to maybe address it. Okay. Other than questions, proceeding. Anyway, tell everybody that we appreciate the great job you do. I want to let you know that the communication has really improved between our planning department and also the Department and its planning department, and also inspections. I think that's been a real positive thing for the growth and development, because we have so many projects going on in Stanton this time. And that lack of communication to where somebody's already doing something, and you haven't even seen the plans yet, those days are past us. And so to me, I think that's made a lot of difference in the stability of what we do. It makes the people that are developing our town more comfortable, because they know that all of a sudden, somebody's not gonna stop them because of some document or something that we didn't do. So I want to give you kudos for the increased communication and services they provide. So to everybody down the line, know that I would appreciate it. And if you tell Lori that we think the role of her and the things that she's done, you're out of the way. I just hope that our major projects is better than her.
Will you thank her very much, she helps me.
Okay, so we are going to have an action here. We've had opening a public hearing at this time. The survey from the public that we'd like to address item seven A. Okay, we'll close the public hearing, bring it back to the council, put the action. We have, we're gonna add on two to three, the survey motion.
I'm the, so I can.
Thank you. You have the first, please, vote.
If you support by that motion, second word for recommended action, items one through four, correct?
Yep. I'll go there, I did one.
I'm not a secret vote called vote. Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Torres?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Lieutenant Dan?
Yes.
And Mayor Charker?
Yes. Item A eight, this is approval of ordinance eleven twenty-six. We brought this up and introduced it in our meeting on January tenth. Go ahead, come out first, please, with the title.
Council. Mr. Mayor, members of the City Council, this evening have approval of ordinance number one-one-two-six. The recommended action this evening is that we read the title, which is in ordinance of the City Council of the City of Stanton, California, amending the city's purchasing ordinance as set forth in Title Two of the Stanton Municipal Code. And City Council of ordinance number one-one-two-six. That concludes the staff report. Are you able for any questions that you may have?
Okay. In summary of this, we did write everything occurring, and we gave the ability to spend extra money and then the requirement for Caldo. I think it's been well done. It was a great document. I think we're ready to move forward with it. If anybody has any questions or changes they'd like to make. Okay, is there a question for item twenty-two? One to write in.
I'll second it.
Okay. Have a word, please, vote.
Yes, Mayor, we have a motion by Mayor Lieutenant Dan. He said, if I may, Councilmember Warren, I'm not a secret vote called vote. Councilmember Taylor?
Yes.
Councilmember Torres?
Yes.
Councilmember Warren?
Yes.
Mayor Lieutenant Dan?
Yes.
And Mayor Charker?
Thank you. A B, this is consideration of the extension of the E and A of the Grand Wine Acquisition Group, CNC Development Company, and National Community Renaissance for National Community, the Tina Pacific Development Project. I believe that goes to very well.
Oh, actually, I agree with that.
Oh, excuse me.
Good evening, honorable mayor members of the council. This evening, the council and Housing Authority will consider extending the existing E and A with Grand Wine Acquisitions Group, CNC Development Company, and National Community Renaissance of California for the Tina Pacific Project. The extension will provide staff and the development team an additional one hundred eighty days to finalize negotiations for disposition and development agreements to be presented to council and the Housing Authority along with any other necessary documents. The Tina Pacific Project, also referred to as by Northern Crossing, is generally located in the northeast quadrant of the city at the intersection of Benolia Avenue and Pacific Avenue. Since two thousand nine, the city and the Housing Authority have worked to make this project a reality and to deliver much-needed housing, including over one hundred affordable housing units to the city. Since two thousand nine, the city has had to navigate various impact points related to the project, including acquisition, relocation, and legislative mandates, including the most recent Surplus Land Act. As a result of the Surplus Land Act, the city entered into an exclusive negotiating agreement with the developers in May twenty-two, which ran through November twenty-two. Since then, the city and development team have exercised the two ninety-day extension as allowed in the original E and A, extending the term through February tenth, twenty-three. The city's staff and the development team have worked diligently to advance the project and have made significant progress. The extension of the E and A will allow for the completion of negotiations and result in a disposition and development agreement for the council and Housing Authority's consideration. Each of the three developers will submit additional deposits of ten thousand dollars to go towards negotiation costs. That concludes my staff report, and I'm available for any questions. In addition, tonight, we have an attendance represented from the development team, Mr. Todd Cottle, Principal of CNC, and Mr. Jim Bearse, Chairman of Grand Wine, in the audience, and also available to answer any questions. Thank you.
I'll just give a couple of comments before I will open it up. I guess if I could, if there was light beyond the tunnel, at the end of the tunnel, or the shadows, or whatever you want to do it. I mean, this is fifteen years from me, and fifteen million dollars. And if the State of California stops this one more time, I assure you that I will personally go up to Sacramento. I've already got my plane ticket. I'm taking our city manager with me, because it's her job, and not her job. And she swore to me that before she leaves this city, we're gonna have Tina Pacific done. So we've got a little bit of time left. But I think it's good that we do extend this, because the partnership that we have with the developers, both at market rate and the low-end model housing, has been a true symbiosis in supporting accident. I don't want to start all over again. I would, I, you know, we've been down this link for too many years, as Carol and I have both. And I know that all of a sudden, you've experienced a long period, and you're gonna be on for a short time. And so we weren't ended. We want to build probably one of the, for the first time, a complex area where there is a mixture between at-market rate housing, which is gonna pay for the low-end model housing, to where we target across the city and more money. I was still out trying to muster up a little bit of money from the State of California, so I'll be working on that in the coming. I think with the drought in the housing element, right now, we've already saved almost four hundred thousand dollars per unit in acquisition. Our relocation is gonna be taken care of, because we're gonna do what's right legally with the people that are there. But it's time for us to take care of the people that live there. They deserve better. They don't deserve to live in that element. They don't deserve to live in that environment. And it's gonna have to stop. And shame on the State of California for making this wait this long. That being said, I think you all, I'll, I'll go about this, and I'll open it up for questions for both of the gentlemen that are here tonight, and also if you have any of the staff. So we'll go ahead and start with Donald, you first.
Okay.
Thank you. Carol?
Maybe just that, I know that our staff has been very thorough and very methodical about working with the people that are living in Tina Pacific and giving them generous paperwork, so they knew what was going on. They know what we're trying to do, whether we can get it done or not. Because of the state, that's something else. But I, I, I know that our staff is doing an excellent job trying to fix this storm. I want to thank them for all the hard work. Other than that, I don't know, but maybe we should just hear from Grand Wine and their thoughts on it as to how they feel it's coming on.
Yeah, I did reach out to both parties and tell them we just wanted that update. You know, one of the things that's very difficult about this is the fact that if the state has certain requirements, and let me tell you, in a nutshell, what's happening, because this is kind of like a pet, pet project. What's happening is that the State of California has been very tough on cities that aren't doing anything. And so they treat everybody the same. The city of Stanton has so much, has done so much, everything from beginning with our navigation centers, to home key, to room key, I'm sorry, room key to home key, to supportive housing, to permanent supportive housing, conversion of three living areas, the, the thorough house for motel kids, housing the elimination foundation for ten years. I mean, there's not much else we can do, but yet they categorically put us in a group of cities that don't do anything, and they hold us to a standard that's ridiculous. In other words, it's an example. They want us to complete A before we start B, but A's paying for B. So how are you gonna get to B until you get the money from A? I mean, it's stupid. And then, here's a kicker. If you don't meet their criteria month-wise, they fine you eight million dollars out of your general fund. I mean, like, come on. And that's the reality of what we're up against. However, I think we spent a great deal of money with our legal team. We have spent a lot of money. We, our department has done an outstanding job in preparing the documents. We have the full support of the at-market rate and the affordable housing element. Now, we have a great package that we're setting up. Sacramento, this is like it, I will read it. And the last thing that went Sacramento is beat up. I will guarantee you that. Go ahead, Carol.
It's so funny. When we first started out this project, we were all excited about it, and the, several of the quadruplexes were three hundred thousand. We're like, wow, how are we gonna come up with three hundred thousand per quad to get those things bought? And then turn around, delay after delay after delay. Oh, no, the quadruplexes are six hundred thousand. How are we gonna get the money to get these things bought? Well, now, because this has taken so long, they're over a million. So, you know, Chris, well, how are we gonna get the money to get these things bought? It's, it's just taken forever. And, I mean, we, we've all gone over on site. We've talked to the residences, we've, the people there, and, you know, I mean, we, we've really tried. So I'm, I'm hoping that this year, we can take that next step. But it might take Hannah punching the governor in the nose before we can get her done. So anyway, hopefully, we can wrap, start wrapping this up.
And we've spent an inordinate amount of city money with our legal team. We have searched through every aspect of how would you get to comply with these stupid state regulations to get this thing done. And unfortunately, I'm at a point where I said, we're not spending any more money. We're not gonna do any more legal. We're just gonna go up there and lay our, put things out before them and be honest with them and see what happens. You know, one of the problems is, is that, that Department of Housing up there, they got the people who are the weak. So just about the time you get some kind of a relationship with the people that make the decisions, they don't work there anymore. And so you start all over again. And you can imagine the new people coming in, they're hearing how much these other cities aren't doing anything, and they want to punish us. And that's kind of what we're at with this. And that's just basically being transparent. But I assure you, I served on the State Housing Commission. I've been justified before the state and the Assembly Housing Commission. I have made symposiums up in Sacramento. They know who I am. And I'm a very gentle person to a point, but I will represent this city and those people that live in those conditions. They're unfair to them and their families, and my voice will be heard. And I'm taking probably the best ally we've ever had, who is a young lady that's sitting to my right side, who told me that she's much tougher than I am. So we'll be okay. All right, Mr. Brissette, come on up and give us a update, please. And you can break your coat, and cry with you.
Evening, Mayor and Council. Thank you for your opportunity tonight to be here to address and try to answer any questions you might have. Obviously, we fully support the recommendations of staff, and with whom we've had an excellent working relationship. Now, we will disagree, but we have an excellent working relationship, and I think so forth, and that results in what we've done today together pretty as a public private team, on very well set, set up. And I cannot imagine the State of California not fighting by what we collectively propose this evening. The, this one is important. The man hours that have gone into from the city's standpoint and from our, the development company's standpoint, it's, send those aside. We look at this from the very beginning as an excellent opportunity to create a unique development, one that you rarely see, especially in Southern California and Orange County. We've already invested a hundred thousand, a lot of a hundred thousand dollars, just in preliminary plans, so that we can have an idea of what we're doing, that we can do rather than just doing something high on this guy. This is real. This is real-world recommendations that we're defending. And we have to put our money in our mouth. It's, we're gonna be adding an additional compensation to the city. Each of the three companies, we put an additional ten thousand dollars in, collectively, as we represent over a hundred thousand dollars. Good big money, but you know, we really, we put our money in our mouth. It's, our goal is to make this. Our goal is to make this happen as absolutely rapid as possible. We know the economy has some problems right now. But just to give you an example of what we're doing. And Todd Cottrell from CNC Construction is here and he can give you another aspect of what's going on today in the development community. We know we have high interest rates. We know that we have high home prices. We know that, that people are concerned about what's going to happen if the economy will blow or what the Federal Reserve will is doing. But the fact of the matter is, we have two communities. We just closed out the second phase, a total of forty-two new towns, not dissimilar from what we'll be looking at here in the state of Pacific. In the city of Carson, we just did that, the very large project, so we'll be there for a little bit longer. Second project, we just brand opened, we just sold five of our homes there. And they're higher, higher incomes, they're seven hundred, almost eight hundred thousand dollars in the San Gabriel Valley area. The heartbeat is there if you produce good product, good community development aspects. The people, the people recognize the value in it. Those are general comments. I'd answer any specific ones at this point in time. We certainly would also that the council would be, continue this, this support we're meeting together. And I would like to hint that this year, certainly, we're going to be able to put together the fundamental elements of the DEA Development and Disposition Agreement. And we're going to move forward rapidly as the city will get our plan approved. I'm betting on that. Thank you. Any questions that I can?
One of the conversations that I had with Mr. Brusick, I asked him about available money and how much he's still wanting to spend to get moving on this once we get the okay from Sacramento. Do you want to give me what your reply was on that?
Excuse me. I'm, I would reclaim age disability. My hearing aids are not working off that well. Could you please repeat the question?
I can answer what you said. Mr. Brusick said that he has some money, he's ready to spend it, he's ready to get out of the day. He just needs to get Sacramento to give us the okay. So I think hopefully I paraphrased that correctly.
You did fair, exactly. Thank you.
Anyway, go ahead, Alash.
One thing I remember our mayor saying about it won't cost the city any more money if we get this going. Can, can you expand on that? How, I mean, how, how much money are we talking about?
Well, we, oh, here's folks. Mr. Cottrell, Mr. Money, Mr. Member. He gets to guess that.
Thank you, Jim. What we had intended by that, that comment, really the goal is to be able to combine kind of the economic engine of a for-sale project to help to facilitate the rest of acquisitions that need to occur out there, relocation eventually, project costs associated with it, but not having the city overall to, to, to come out of pocket beyond some initial additional acquisitions, which will be refunded through that seventeen and a half million dollars that, that, that were currently outplayed.
That microphone needs to end the arm a little bit there. Yeah, they'll say it perfectly.
Yes, thank you.
So what I just heard is there'll be seventeen and a half million dollars that will be used to fund relocation and acquisition. And the city would not be responsible for any money beyond that, is that correct?
That, that, that's correct. And the seventeen and a half will go to reimburse the city personally just line positions that are still needing to occur. And then some, and then, and then facilitate then the relocation costs and everything associated with it.
And then the acquisition of the remaining nine properties and the relocation of all the tenants that currently live in Tina Pacific exceeds seventeen and a half million? How would that affect?
We're, we're looking to incorporate that into budget for the affordable housing, but also looking at other processes.
Not a bunch of them.
Not looking to add additional.
So we've already extended this twice for ninety days. And I know that when we originally discussed this, I think December twenty-one, I did not anticipate that it would need more than a hundred and eighty days. But now it seems like we need another hundred and eighty days. Do you expect, do you expect another extension will be needed after that or is this going to get done?
We're not currently anticipating an additional extension. Because we've worked through this process, there's a lot of nuances associated with the different components out there. And then really working through the filter and everything for, for the state as well, which is, it's a complicated transaction on its own. Having to run through that filter and also dealing with the state, appreciate some of the city's comments. We truly do look at it as a partnership, not only with the development team, but also really in conjunction with the city to get across the finish line with the state. Not anticipating additional time, we really look to fill that in here on time. But this is the time period that we're looking to get the, the development accomplished.
You discuss under which circumstances you would, you think we might need another extension after a hundred and eighty days?
I think if we get a curve ball from the state of California, which is really the biggest variable and the biggest unknown. We have experience on other developments over time in every industry, but the state will lose everything on a case-by-case basis. That would be really the scenario that we're, you know, that we would contemplate.
I think, I think the timing is right if we all look at the market. The houses we want to buy have dropped from one point two million down to eight hundred thousand. So if you take the cumulative number of acquisitions we have left, times four hundred thousand dollars, well, one point two million, we might be able to save, who knows? The other factor in it is the fact that if we go back through in the, the relocation costs, they have been dropped down because we're having to adhere to the law of whether we have to give the public funds or not in the relocation process. If we take away at the rules for relocation, of which we're governed, we are responsible under the law for certain relocations. If that is, comes true to where some of our estimates are, that's going to also be important. You've got to realize that I, or they're looking for more money. But it's a little more difficult for them because they're going from a, a big pool of people that want it. But if the city goes for it, there may be an opportunity for us to do it. And we're going to be very aggressive and looking for any additional funding that we can get. There's no assurances in mind, but this gives us a breathing opportunity for the state to do the right thing.
Carol?
I was just, personally, I was just thinking this might be something that we do talk to Randy about.
I was wondering if there will be any extra barriers if the housing market will go back up. How would I look at that? Extra, if the, if the, if the price reached you that would increase the price like it a year ago?
Yeah.
What, what, how would we be standing with the city?
The, if the housing market, I mean, the acquisition of the remaining buildings that were out there? I think it's, we're in a good position where we are. When we first started looking at it, we've seen prices come down a little bit from, from that first really, given where the interest rates are and the value of existing multifamily properties. I think though it is prudent for us to be able to move forward quickly with, with those acquisitions and continue this moving along. What we would likely see as the interest rates have come down, the value of those existing units out there will start to go back up. As investors look at it, they look at it based upon typically a capitalization rate for a part of the building. So they look at what their, what their return would be relative to, to other assets that's out in the market. So, so we, we do want to move it forward quickly because I think at this point in time, we can take advantage of some, or realize lower pricing out there in the market and, and potentially still have the ability to throw a higher price.
You have a goal also, people that live there, they've endured too long. So we have a power of amendment. This board has already recommended the city take, initiate additional letters of incoming to the people that do not want itself, because it's not fair to those groups. There's also a friendly combination. So we can also offer those people that own those properties, a friendly combination to receive benefits that financially. So there's a couple of other ways we could go if that was to happen. I think it's time for us to quit being nice and to get more aggressive with the state of California and the people that own those properties so that the quality of life for the people that are there now, which had endured too long, to be, I really think so. And that's my goal. And I hope it's, I think it's the goal of all of us. I mean, the bottom line is we're talking about people. I don't want to talk about housing and all that. We're talking about people's lives and the impact on their families. And that's what we have to take notice. I think the good news is that we're all on the same page now. We've had some obstacles. I think our staff is a great symbiosis with your people now. I think our legal department has available everything to you. I don't see any other verb marks with us. As you see, the only verb mark is the people that have no clue what they're doing in Sacramento. But we will educate them to the best of our ability and bring this thing.
We, we appreciate those comments and we're on the same page that way. Do appreciate the city staff's time and your legal council's time as well, just figuring out this complicated project. But agree that really getting to the state of California is our last remaining hurdle that we have. But appreciate the partnership with the city and, and really just the working relationship with everybody involved in this transaction.
And I appreciate the patience of your organization. I know the money that you're trying to get is not easy to get and it doesn't fall off the screen. But I also know that there's been a lot of hurdles for the past couple of years. And I appreciate the fact that you stayed with us and not bail on us.
We appreciate the partnership of the city. It's a long-term commitment to one another, especially with what we do on the affordable housing and additionally the investments on for grandy one of the single family. But it's, it's a long-term relationship, not only as we go through this process, but as we provide long-term housing for residents.
What's nice about it too is the fact that, you know, it's sometimes it's easy to move on. It's, it's a little easier. So I appreciate the fact that you stayed with us. You know, you're a very, very large organization and you have a lot of other opportunities. But the state of Stanton has been watching us. I think that's why we're comfortable with getting such a.
Appreciate that, thank you.
Okay, so are this, any other questions from anybody? Is there any other things from staff? Okay, great. That'd be good. We're going to do a recommended action, which is number one, that is not subject to CECL. We're going to approve an extension starting in February for six months, correct? And that's pretty it. If somebody would like to make that motion, it's a choice. Thank you. Okay, great. Roll call.
We have a motion by Councilmember Torres, it's like I'm a mayor president Dan. I would not concede a roll call vote. It's Councilmember Taylor.
Yes.
Councilmember Torres.
Yes.
Councilmember Warren.
Yes.
Mayor President Dan.
Yes.
And Mayor Shoppard.
Yes, Gary, I hope you didn't have a question because I didn't see your hand up.
That's okay.
I'm just checking, thank you. All right, we are now at new business. This is the adoption of the Stanton Local Hazard Mitigation Plan for both FEMA and for LHMP. This is our big turn.
Good evening, all of our members of the council. Tonight we have a representative from Atlas Planning Solutions to provide a presentation on the local hazard mitigation plan.
Good evening, Mayor, House Members. My name is Aaron Dan, so with Atlas Planning Solutions, I'll just walk you through briefly tonight the presentation and then we can talk through any questions back up. Okay, so tonight we'll talk about the city's recent cooperation on the local hazard mitigation plan. This was led by the city manager's office. And the purpose of this is to open the city's opportunities for FEMA hazard mitigation grants. So the city did receive funding from FEMA to pay for this. There was a local match associated with that. The city used in-kind services, so staff hours to buy that local cost match, which was a great savings for the city. And just to give you a little context on what we're talking about tonight, when we talk about hazards within our community like Santa, there's really three main plans or documents that the city staff would rely. It really is dependent on how much or how little time you have or need to address the issue and then how much or little detail. If you have a short amount of time and you need a great amount of detail, then you would focus on something called the emergency operations plan. And this is really what helps city staff during an emergency to tell staff, here's what we need to do, where you need to go, here are the protocols to need to follow. When we look at a long-term vision of how we want to address the hazards and the issues within our community, this is where we focus on the general plan safety element. And this identifies a series of policies and actions that not only the planning department, but other departments, as well as future project components would take to reduce hazard issues and conditions within the community as part of the development process. The hazard mitigation plan sits right in between those. It's really a five-year strategic plan. What we do with this, I'll, I'll walk you through. But it's really focused on how do you understand where, what issues you have and where do you want to head with those issues to try to mitigate or, or reduce those potential impacts in the future. So hazard mitigation in and of itself, these are sustained actions to reduce or limit long-term risk. You want to take actions within your community and make things less vulnerable to the hazards that you've identified. And, and as part of that, it's really about creating a plan. That's what the local hazard mitigation plan is, it's really following the process and creating a plan. Sorry, this, this work very well. So there's really four main steps. We want to discuss what are the community hazards and we'll walk you through those. We'll then analyze those hazards in relation to your assets, the key elements of your community that you're most concerned about. And then identifying policies or projects that will help you reduce risk to those hazards. Then ultimately, the direction you need to take, implement and monitor the plan and see how much progress you're making towards that risk reduction activity. So who participated in this plan? We had a number of members from various departments within the city, as well as the sheriff's department, representatives of Orange County Fire Authority. And we facilitated discussions amongst all of these parties over a series of meetings to really discuss and walk through the process and the issues that there was concern about. So why did we prepare this? It's really so that we open the door to new funding. The whole point of this is that once you've gone through this process, on an annual basis with the budget that is signed and passed by Congress, there is money earmarked for hazard mitigation purposes for all of these states. In addition, every time a disaster declaration is signed by the president, there's also a pot of money for hazard mitigation purposes. You would not be eligible for any of that funding unless you have this plan in place. And once you have it in place, depending on where that funding source comes from, your pool may be highly competitive when you're competing across the entire nation. Or it could be very focused and not as competitive if you are under a disaster declaration. Just to give you a reference, there were about seven counties that have been declared in this last series of arrangements. And all seven of those counties now would be competing amongst each other and not nationwide, let alone statewide, for mitigation funding pot of money that has been released because of that declaration. The hazards address, we covered urban fire, drought, extreme heat, climate change, power failure, flooding, dam failure, hazmat release, hazard materials, and sites of hazards. These were the hazards that were identified by the committee that was created as part of the process. And all but, I'd say, two of those are eligible for the FEMA grant funding sources. What FEMA does not provide is they do not provide funding for anything that is not natural hazard-based. So when you see things like terrorism, which you didn't cover in your plan, but many communities that we work with do, these are not the types of activities that FEMA would provide this mitigation funding for. And then the process that we went through, so we started this in July of last year. And, I'm sorry, July of twenty twenty-one through June of twenty twenty-two. That was the kind of the start of the process. And running that process through when it finally made its way to Caloocas and started the review process with both the California Housing Emergency Services and then ultimately with FEMA, Federal Emergency Management Agency. It was finally adopted or approved by FEMA in December. And that's why we're bringing this here to you tonight. As part of the process, we did do public participation. We actually participated in one of your Halloween festivals. This is in twenty twenty-one. We had an online survey. We received seventeen responses to the survey. But this online survey and all of the outreach stuff was done, was done through. But this online survey and all of the outreach stuff was done, was done through Let's Talk Stanton, all of your social media resources. We had over six thousand impressions and we reached about twenty-five hundred individual accounts as part of that. So we definitely showed FEMA and the reviewers that we did our part to try to reach out to the community. Unfortunately, the response rate on the survey didn't really translate. And then we also conducted a meeting here at City Hall when we released the public review draft in July of last year. And that was one of the last times I think we were in front of you speaking about this. And then finally, one last piece is implementation. So once you approve this plan and adopt it, it's really now time for staff to roll up their sleeves and get to work. Start looking for funding opportunities. And one of the things we put into all of our plans in the last few years is an implementation workbook. It's really designed to help you understand when a disaster declaration occurs, here are some helpful steps of what you should be doing with your plan. When you need to update this document or that document, here are the things you should hopefully look at within your plan and integrate to together. So hopefully it's a tool that will really help you over the next five years. So the next time this comes around, it's a much easier process and it's. And then with that, I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Did you go back to the first slide?
The very first slide?
I can do that for you.
Is it not just the county of Orange County?
Orange County Fire Authority, Orange County Sheriff's Department. The Orange County itself, members.
The EMS Emergency Services Department serves as the health department, so it's not out there? Because we see we missed pandemic.
Right, you missed pandemic. Pandemic would not be considered a hazard that you would be able to get funding for. And when we discussed that with the team, they identified that the county was actually in charge of doing a lot of the work surrounding pandemic. And that this hazard profile wouldn't really assist the city specifically.
Why would that not be part of our plan for our city?
The point was to try to release funding and be able to get funding. And this funding source would not apply to anything pandemic related.
Well, besides, besides funding, this is an implementation plan of how you go about keeping care of situations.
Right.
One of the greatest errors that this county made two and a half years ago was the inception of the pandemic, of which they did absolutely nothing. They had no plan for it. They had no resources for it. And it took them three years to get it right. Why would we not have something, not necessarily COVID, but why would we have something in place for that for our residents?
Because this would not be the appropriate location to address that particular issue. When you're dealing with hazardous conditions within your community, this plan is appropriate when we're focusing on natural hazards that you want to obtain funding for. But your emergency operations plan, that's really the primary plan that you want to use to address all of the concerns you have within the community. And oftentimes, most communities under their EOP will actually create annexes, one of which would be a pandemic or epidemic annex. That would be the most appropriate tool. So for me as a consultant, I'm here to provide you with the best recommendation. And my recommendation would be, let's not use a hammer when you need a screwdriver. And to try to put a pandemic profile in here would not actually help you address the issues and the needs of your community as best as if you were to actually live in the right location for being your emergency operations.
And Mayor, if I can, so all the classes that are trying to jump in on this as well, but your participation. I agree, there were many lessons learned across counties throughout California. And so I'm blanking on the full explanation, the acronym, but the OCSMA group has been doing a lot. That was getting pandemic to refine those strategies and it's a regional collaborative research, so I can add on to that.
Mayor, representing council. So the OCSMA was the Orange County Emergency Management Organization. And then as reference, any response to the rate and then it's like a situation is coordinated through Orange County on the Hill of the Sheriff's Department as well as Orange County Health. So they serve as the lead agency. For example, in the COVID pandemic, they served as the lead agency. However, we as a city did play a role and then it essentially tripled down to us. And as you remember, we ran the vaccination clinics and then participated in other events throughout the county and provided manpower. And then subsequently, we were to see reverse of those out.
No, and I understand that it's a great program. It's just that we had to go out and actually get it to come. Originally, they weren't even having interest in that city. But we were lucky enough to get everything needed eventually. That was my concern. So.
Sure, and I think that's part of.
You were the lead on this and it wasn't your county. And so that's why I have a concern about local control and the ability for us to take care of the situation.
Sure, I think one of the lessons learned through this, and I think we executed it reasonably well as a city, is that when the funding comes down to, essentially came through to the county, there was essentially a competition component for the cities that made themselves available to open these vaccination clinics. And fortunately, we were able to present a plan that was suitable to them. So we were able to be from some of the other cities that weren't prepared in that fashion. Along with Public Works, Scott Johnson, myself, we actually had a essentially a tabletop exercise a month before the money became available in preparation for that. And we're able to show the folks at the county EOC that we would be able to suitably execute the tasks of that position. So from a funding standpoint, my understanding is that it's always going to go to the county first and then it's incumbent upon us to present ourselves as the best option to utilize those funds.
And that's my point, city plan. There's a city plan. That's the whole justification for us to have a cap. How about things like PPOS? Is that something that's been discussed by your agency?
PPOS was not brought up as part of the discussion here when we talked about water. The PPOS issue, however, I believe was addressed. And I probably looked to your water department to verify in the risk resilience assessments that were done as part of the OEA compliance that was required back in 2020.
You're aware of the fact that shutdowns were about a while, sorry?
I'm not sure that that was mentioned when we talked about this about a year ago.
Well, the reason I'm saying that is that that's something that should be in the scheme of local control. Because if they're shutting down wells that supply water within our city because of high concentrations of certain elements, there should be a solution to make sure that we have a backbone for it, of which wells that water comes through. Very good with that. This is part of the overall program. I just mentioned as I go through all that, there's really a couple of little things that are missing to make it complete. But you know, those are the things that probably might happen and just to make sure we're ready for that.
Yeah, and I think with that too, over the next five years, these are probably those issues that you want to try to keep track from an implementation standpoint. And that way you can make sure they're addressed better and be able to improve upon it on the next round. Because if you want to continue to maintain your eligibility for this funding, then you'll have to update the plan every five years. So with that, you'll be able to incorporate some additional items and concerns that you might have. And you can always add on additional things to the plan that may not necessarily open up the door to funding, but may be more conducive to the concerns you really have within your community.
Thank you.
I was just wondering, because climate change is such a highly contentious issue, what parameters you're applying to climate change as far as to fund it?
So climate change was identified. This is something that FEMA is requiring all jurisdictions to address within the hazard mitigation plan as of April 19th this year. So that's the new guidance that's now coming out. So all LHMPs that are being updated will need to address climate change at a local level. And what we rely on is CALADAPT, using a lot of the information coming out of the state's resources that they provide through CALADAPT. But our concern with climate change is not whether or not it's happening. It's really about what are the projections that are currently available and that have been vetted through the different agencies and how they could potentially exacerbate the issues within your community. So what we want to understand and be able to share with all of the different departments is what are the number of extreme heat days that you have today? And what is the potential change? And how could that affect your community? And so if you see that in the next thirty years, the number of days that the temperature would increase over a certain threshold may be triple or quadruple what they are today, we want to be able to provide that information so that city departments can look at how do they allocate resources today and how does that need to change? And how does it need to be budgeted in the future?
Are they only interested in a reactive program? Or are they interested in working with the cities on a proactive program that all along those other ones?
They absolutely want to be proactive. So if there are additional ideas that you have as you start to work through the plan over the next five years, you can absolutely add those in and there's really only benefit that would occur to the city as a result. And oftentimes what will happen is if there's a new action that you want to undertake and you want to put in a hazard mitigation plan, you can add it into the plan, send it up to the state and they'll just log it in and you'll be eligible for grant funding with regards to that.
So I'm hearing that the purpose of this plan is to see a funding. And I'd like to know, what percentage of the cities that we helped create the local hazard mitigation plan were actually got funding from FEMA? And how likely is it that Stan and Thurs were not getting funding?
The likelihood is really dependent on how much effort the city puts into incorporating this plan into daily life. For the cities that do it, they're able to get a lot of funding. One city that we worked with, this is now the third time we've updated their plan over the last fifteen years, they've been able to secure over thirty million dollars worth of hazard mitigation focused funding. Many cities that haven't had these plans have quickly put in grant applications as soon as the notice of funding availability has been issued. They've been able to secure two to three billion dollars pretty quickly, depending on the funding availability. So it's really predicated on the push that is coming from behind the days and also from behind all the staff desks in getting this plan to become actualized. One of the things that we have found with so many communities, and I'll say on a percentage of all the communities I've helped, you know, maybe it's twenty to thirty percent are actually realizing the financial benefits and the way it falls from this. When we start a process and we ask the question, how many of you worked on the last plan? There's no hands going up. How many of you know what this plan is? And they don't even know what it is or what it does. And so part of it is an educational process. The beauty is this is your very first plan. There was no cost associated with this plan being created. So if you don't do anything with it, there's really no loss. It's really just the opportunity cost of not actually going out pursuing it.
So from the time that we adopt this plan to the time we make, assuming we do everything you say and push the funding and have our staff really on it, how much time do you anticipate where we actually get money to our cities for this implementation?
So typically, a grant process will notice a funding available will open up. It's usually about a three to six month process to get the first kind of phase of the application. And then probably another six months after that. So it's usually about a year-long process or so for the grant itself to finally get blessed by FEMA. And then it really comes down to how quickly you have a project in hand. And it also depends on the nature of the project. If you're looking at doing, you know, millions of dollars worth of infrastructure improvement, it's really going to be based on what is your construction timeframe, when you need to be reimbursed. And some of these projects, and we've got several clients where they've actually had to update the plan mid-cycle or while they're still working on the construction process because it's been such a long timeframe to complete. So I would say, you know, quickly you might be able to see money within the next three years, you know, but part of it also really depends on what you're trying to accomplish. If you're trying to construct something, the timeframe's a lot longer. If it's really just a matter of planning, paying for a plan, a study or some sort of updates to something you're already doing that's connected now to your hazard mitigation plan, that timeframe could be significantly reduced.
In the cities, in the cities that you've worked with that actually got funding, is it the staff internally within the city that submits the grant application things like that? Are they hiring like an outside consultant to do all that?
Both.
Okay, so would you recommend a certain path for our city?
It really depends on your resources. So if you have internal resources that are astute at pursuing grants and successful, then it sounds like you may already have a winning combination. If not, or if you don't feel like you have enough resources to take on a new grant funding source, that might be a conversation you want to have internally about budgeting, about how you would do staffing or something like that and whether or not an outside consultant would be helpful. And there's a number of consultants out there that do that.
My second question regarding that response rate to the survey. You mentioned that there were only seventeen participants despite the thousands of impressions that you made online and the two community events that you did to get folks to be aware of this. Is this typical of cities that work with only a limited number of respondents?
It's fairly common. Some of the cities where we see a larger kind of feedback cycle are those cities where they have longstanding emergency management focused programs, whether they have a CERC program, whether they already have a huge cadre of volunteers that are focused on hazards and emergency management. We do find in those communities that there's a slightly larger, you know, response rate. But you're not, you're not too dissimilar from some of the other communities that are similar in nature to Stanton.
And if I may ask, who are these seven people that responded? What kind of responses are you seeing? What are their concerns?
All of the, all of the responses are actually in the plan itself. We actually put it in the NACC.
Thank you so much.
Any other questions? Oh, Mr. Taylor.
Yes, sir. Are there any mediation plans or money for possible earthquakes?
So mitigation, earthquake mitigation funding is available. Actually, if you look through the California Earthquake Authority, there are some mitigation programs. They have, I think, a brace and bolt program and one or two other programs that help with earthquake mitigation. And those are also programs that we highlight and try to focus on for communities like Stanton where you may have seismicly vulnerable structures, for sure.
Yes, definitely. Thank you.
Yes, so we pay our pro-rated share and so that's the other costs to this program?
The cost share that was used was actually just stat line, so there was no money that exchanged.
Okay, great. And is there a written copy of this report?
Yes, yeah, there.
Excellent. Well, thank you very much for that. Thank you for your ideologies. I think you gave us a very good overview of what we did in there.
Great, thank you.
You have anything?
Thank you.
Yeah, bring it back to the council for any additional questions, anything from the staff. If not, our recommended action on this item is number one to adopt. Can we see, oh, this is received in the pile.
We have pre-recommended action, meaning the first one is to declare specific CEQA, received in file recommendation and also approve resolution number 2023-03.
So we're asking that it's right?
Yes, sir.
Okay. Is there a motion?
I'll move it.
Gary, I got some great news for you. Mr. Torres beat you, so you can second it.
I'll second it.
Okay.
Motion by Councilmember Torres, the second by Councilmember Taylor, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Hearing that, I am happy.
Okay, now our nine D, this is the schedule for appointments to the planning mission, which are, may I say, and I will take.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor. Good evening, all members of the council. We have a meeting this evening. The schedule for appointments to the planning mission, parks recreation and community service association, as well as the public safety community. The city is currently seeking residents who are interested in serving on the council appointed boards. The recommended action for this evening is that the city council declare this society as not subject to CEQA, approve the proposed recruitment schedule and select a date to conduct commissioner, committee member candidate interview and appointment. The suggested date is the regular city council meeting of February 28th of 2023. And if the number of commissioned applicants is greater than ten, council may wish to call a special meeting for either. for either Thursday, March second, Tuesday, March seventh, Thursday, March ninth, or propose an alternative date to conduct interviews and follow-ups. That concludes staff support and may we answer the questions that you have?
I see you have a call. These are city-wide appointments?
Correct. These are, you have appointments that are made to each of these commission committees that coincide with your term limits. So since we have three seats, Councilwoman Torres, Councilwoman Taylor, and Ms. Shabbart, we now need to vote through and reappoint our committees to all of our commission committees. So we have three vacancies on the planning commission, five vacancies on the parks and recreation commission, and three on public safety. So this is an announcement to let council know that we'll be proceeding with this process. We will also let our commissioners and committee members know, and then open it to the public. So standard process for our commissions, once they're elected, are reappointed.
They don't have to live in the district or the person.
They do not. We haven't changed that. So our commission and committees are at large preference.
And they don't have to be a registered member?
Correct. They must be eighteen-year-old.
Is there any other view of that question?
Yes, sir.
Okay, so they don't have to be registered members? And they don't have to live in the district for eighteen-year-old?
Okay, they do have to live in Stanton. They do have to live in Stanton within our city limits, but they do not follow the district based restrictions that our council members are trying to. You had mentioned that if the number of commission applicants is greater than ten, which I hope it will be because we have more than ten seats available, we will have to call a special meeting. And so it looks to me like these meeting dates and times are not during regular council meetings. Correct. So we would be inviting certain applicants to come just for the interview. And that would be why everyone has a special meeting to hold interviews. All the candidates would be called at that time. And that's just because if we have a ten interview, it will most likely take two to three hours. We just don't want to add that on to our regular council. Sure. So that means we won't have the interview during the twenty-eighth of February. We'll just have a separate meeting just for interviews. Correct. Okay.
And that's flexible, so we can do it at a moment. If that doesn't work out, we can change it if we have to.
Or if you don't have more than ten applicants by the deadline, I suspect we don't want to extend the deadline. I don't want to assume a meeting date until we figure out the outcome.
Number one, so yes, the meeting. So whatever we want to, so it's not a thing that should be over.
So technically, we would put a date kind of to give our applicants an idea so they either stay on or before on the notice. And if they need to be extended, we can always re-notice that as well. And when we set up this notice, would it be possible to include everyone who applied in the past that weren't successful? And everyone who participated in the Citizens Academy this past year as well as previous years? Absolutely. So our process is to always extend the invitation to those who have applied to all commission committees. We do it on social media, all of our Citizens Academy visits, and we then go back thirty to forty years. So we are reach, we try to reach as far as we can. So definitely, that will happen.
Any questions? Gary, you have a question? Okay. So just quickly to give you a little background. Gary, you have a planning commissioner, I have a planning commissioner, and Tom, you have a planning commissioner. Gary, you have a park and rec. I have a park and rec.
Three parks and recs.
You have a park and rec, and I have two more. And then Gary, you have a public safety. I have a public safety, and Tom, you have a public safety. And I didn't appoint my wife, just so you know.
That's correct.
I left her room. I was left behind by her dad. Okay, good. Okay, we're going to need an action on this item to go ahead and to recommend that this is not subject to SECW and to approve the temporary proposed recruitment schedule that we can amend if we have to. Is there a motion?
I'll second Mr. Torres' motion.
Thank you. Go ahead.
We have a motion by Councilmember Torres, a second by Councilmember Warren, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Seconded, if you have any votes. Hearing that, I am happy that we will move forward with the February twenty-eighth schedule at this time.
Okay, I have my seat. This is Cypress College Foundation American Awards.
And the state and local representatives. Good evening, Mayor and City Councilmembers. We have before you this evening, City Council's consideration for participation through sponsors of contribution for the forty-eighth annual Cypress College Foundation Americana Awards, scheduled for Saturday, March eleventh of this year. This award ceremony is the civic fundraiser for the Cypress College Foundation with all proceeds benefiting Cypress College students and programs and honors the six million years of service they've done. As reported earlier this evening, this gentleman, Ryan Donovan, has shown even as a college student, and he will be honored as a state's champion this year. The recommended action this evening is that City Council find a time or not subject to SECW, approve the city's participation through a sponsorship, and discuss and direct the act of receipt with the selection and purchase of either option number one, the benefactor sponsorship at a cost of three thousand five hundred dollars, which includes registration for ten and a half-page colored donor acknowledgement in the Americana program. Or option number two, the purchase of ten individual registrations at a cost of three hundred per registration for a total cost of three thousand dollars. That concludes staff support and may we answer the questions that you have?
Okay, I'd like to comment on this item. Even though I'm the chairman of the Americana, I'm going to speak quite frankly to you. We have about four hundred of our students of this area that are here. If we were to give each one of them twenty-five dollars, that'd be ten dollars per dollar this college gives out scholarships. If we were just to give them fifty dollars, that would be twenty thousand dollars that the college uses. And if we were just to give each one of them a hundred dollars, that would be forty thousand dollars. I think the thirty-five hundred dollars contributing towards that type of outreach on behalf of our community is very important. Also, I want you to know that I think it's important that we have those two pages in the program to show that we as a city support this organization. So let the people know what it's all about. And I'll know a little bit about ten. You know, I think it's good that we kind of chewed our horn because we've heard of all the wonderful things that we've done. And the other thing too is, is that the last time I did a check, our last contribution from the college to Stanford residents was fourteen thousand dollars a year. And everybody, so that's my argument, even though I do have the sources. Any other questions? I can speak.
Yes, sir. Do we have information about, in previous years, if we did the benefactor sponsorship or we just purchased one? In previous years, we passed that and we have purchased the benefactors. So we typically would like to do benefactor sponsorship. It includes one table and as well as a half-page ad. And we also do additional ads along with that, a smaller ad. But that is where people purchase, yes. And this time, we're getting the, if we were to do the benefactor sponsorship, it would be a half-page. Correct. And then it would be one, registration for ten at one table, right? Correct. Including Mr. Don and his guests, as well as our customers and vendors.
You know, the really good thing about it too is, is the only reason to print it out is Texas, Iran, and food costs. I think food is so much more expensive. Just for it to grow up by a hundred dollars, that's kind of just like solvency survive. You still have to make it affordable. We can't make it out of the living fridge. So the committee decided to restore that because we haven't had an increase for years. And it was just a matter of cost to Disneyland. However, next year, I'm going to recommend that even though we like Disneyland, there may be a hotel in that area where we can get a little bit cheaper. A couple of the people we know are actually recipients of this award. They actually own some of the hotels there, so that may work too. But you know, that's kind of just, but you know, how we ended where we're at. The individual ticket prices have gone up a little bit too. You know, they used to be two fifty and now they're three hundred. So I guess that's just a bit of an inflation. Okay, is there any, go ahead.
Now, one thing I just wanted to comment. I think Stanton, they're going through a renaissance. We're a totally different city than we were before. I think it's good for us to have a half-page out. All the other cities are there. They're going to have to look at us and acknowledge us. I think it's good to have it happen.
And we also get recognition of the city that sponsored it. It'll support the college and we'll all see it together. And I think that is an important thing that we represent in our community also.
Yep.
I think it'll be a chance to hear you, so you may make your difference.
As an attendee of Cypress College myself, I think it would be a great surprise to be able to see our city in those two pages right now. Definitely because I feel like we should be expanding our resources, especially to open up schools. So I think.
Want to make a motion?
Motion for option number one? Option number one is the benefactor without a page ad.
Yes, it is.
All right. So we have a motion by Councilmember Torres for option number one, which is the benefactor sponsorship. Do you have a second?
As the pleasure of a Cypress College graduate, I'll second it.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Hearing that, I am happy that you're moving forward with option number one.
Okay, we're moving on to our communication. At this time, members of the public may address the City Council Succession Scene, Stan Housing Authority regarding items within our subject manager's state, provided that no action can be taken. Before I do that, will there be any correspondence?
Any correspondence, we have them, sir.
Is there anybody online that wants to talk?
No, so we do not. We have that option available.
Okay, great. So then we'll go ahead and we'll bring it to the audience. Irene Stevenson, please.
And for those in the audience, I'd just ask that you speak your name into the microphone and advise you to have print in.
Good evening, this is there and ladies and gentlemen. My name's Irene Stevenson.
I'm sorry.
I can't hear you. And I live in the La La Para de Moho. My concern is, I had called the council or the city about the trees that are not on my property. And I wanted to know who has to take care of them. They're not on my property. There's a war. Well, they put me through to a gentleman. And of course, I'm getting up in age after God is dead. I left several answering machines. And he did respond to two of them, but he eventually responded. And I told him my concern. And he said that he was going to look into it for me and he would get back with me. Well, the cost of cutting those trees down would be a lot of money to me. And I wanted to get in touch with the people. But my son-in-law, he said, no, don't do that. He said, let's see what happens. Well, nothing happened. And he said he was going to go around to the people and see where these trees were on the Stanton or their property or whatever. And I never heard anything back. Well, I had to get those trees cut because they were going up on the lines and they were coming over on my roof. They blocked my sheds drainage system. And all these leaves that were on the roof were creating nests for rodents and that. Well, I eventually had to spend a hundred and fifty dollars on fixed income, a pension. And that's a lot of money for me. It may not seem amounting to you guys, but it is to me. So I had to work around that. But nobody got in touch with me to find out where these, who belonged to these trees. So I don't know.
Okay, now, what we're going to do is before you do a, we gave you a C.A. panel here, our C.A. manager or our C.A. engineer. And they will give you their card. And we will find out where that tree is located and try to find out how we can help you with that. If it's a C.A.'s responsibility, we're going to have to take care of it for you. If it's been taken care of and it was a C.A.'s responsibility, we'll try to figure out how we can take care of that. If it is not the C.A.'s responsibility, we have to be very careful because that's called a gift of public funds. But we will do the right thing by you.
Well, I just want, I just want it to be taken care of. You know, that's their responsibility, you know? It's on their property, not mine. It's on my property. That's my responsibility. So.
Why don't you do me a favor right now? Why don't you come on up? We need a good card right now. And you get a Stanton pin. And you get a Stanton pin?
Do I have a what?
You get a Stanton pin.
Oh, thank you very much. I've only been in Stanton for three years.
Okay, now you get the official.
Oh, wonderful. Thank you, dear.
Oh, you're welcome.
Appreciate it. Okay, thank you.
Okay.
Is that going to pay about a hundred and fifty dollars?
Don Motowicz?
I know because he comes down. That was perfect.
Is there Motowicz?
Motowicz. Don Motowicz.
I actually got it right.
Yeah, you did. It's pretty big, as most people know. Am I allowed to talk about two different things?
Sure, you have three minutes.
I can, I'm tiny baby.
Since you're celebrating proud tonight, you did it. I gave you one more time.
Yeah, I have a concern. I live in the Moho Park also over here. And we have people coming in and stealing stuff all the time. I just wondered if maybe we can give somebody, the police coming in and going through in the middle of the night? More at all, really? Because I never see them. We're supposed to have a security lab. As far as I know, the guy just sleeps through there. And I just wanted to know if we can get the police coming through there at least once, twice a night? Hopefully, we can. And another question, another question I had was about that Stanton Hotel. What's going on with that? Do you do any or no, like, they have been working on it for ever? And who's, who's, what are you living in that?
Which Stanton Hotel?
Stanton Inn or Hotel, whatever it used to be.
Okay, so Ms. Tumio, can you please provide an update? That's part of our Home Key project. So we'll get an update.
Yeah, happy to answer that for you. So Stanton Inn Hotel will be converted to permanent supportive housing under a company called Jamboree, which helps provide services and different types of programs to help folks stay on their feet and obtain permanent housing that they might not have originally obtained. So it'll become housing.
And I believe the timeframe for completion, we have three projects in process. I know one set to open this summer, the other two are, I think, this month later. I don't know where Stanton Inn is on that schedule.
Stanton Inn was one of the first ones to start.
So that will begin this summer.
It'll time.
It'll work on it for a long time. Is that homeless people that are going in there?
Not homeless people. They have to qualify. There may be some transitioning that they'll have to do. There's a program. And there'll be minimum qualifications to occupy in it.
Well, because we just have a lot of homeless people coming in and walking through and understanding. Yeah. I mean, they're all older people.
The people that are there will be very similar to the ones that we had recently that were there from Home Key. They went from kind of a center for COVID for elderly people to a place where people could also have residence. And this is more of a long-term, it's kind of like apartments. And they have to qualify to get in there.
So are we paying for that?
No.
The government?
No. In fact, we're one of the first cities in the state of California to provide this for people in need of it, which helps relieve the burden of the cost to the city. Also, one of the things I want to point out is that we've never had an incident related to that facility since its inception. And I can assure you that none of the home, there's no homeless people that live there that come over and share Moho.
Well, I don't know if they can. Well, I don't know if they do or not. Who knows? Who knows?
I can tell you where they're coming from. They're coming from the drainage canal from under the 22 freeway, where the state of California is not enforcing or no trespass at all. And that's the responsibility of the cities of White Minter and the cities of Garden Grove, which do not have a viable program. It's also the state of California that is doing absolutely nothing to enforce the underpass of the 22 freeway at Beach Boulevard, of which I'll be going to address with our newly-elected Senator Mr. Tretor. That needs to stop because that is impacting our city, which has one of the very best programs of enforcement and also taking care of those that truly need help.
Right.
And so, um, one of the things too is that I'm not very, I'm pretty transparent. I'm not real happy with the clientele of Motel Six.
That's another thing, yeah.
And I'm gonna tell you right now, um, we are looking into that. You know, every, every business, not just Motel Six, has what's known as a conditional use permit, of which they have regulates how they operate. If they're out of compliance in their regulatory scheme, we as a city have a right to revoke their business license. I'm not saying we're going to do that. But I think a real good look at Motel Six is well overdue. There are a lot of prostitutes there. There are a lot of drug addicts going on there. There is a lot of deaths there. There's a lot of murders there. And it's not a very desirable place. And I'll take it very seriously. And I have that on one of my lists of things to you. And usually, I get things done.
Okay.
So, in regards to the Project Home Key, having a Project Home Key, which the county vet the individuals who can be placed in there and they also provide support for them to be able to stay in there. But having that as a resource then allows us to take more proactive strategy in regards to addressing homelessness as a whole in our community. So, it's an important resource and strategy in our overall arsenal of how we deal with homelessness. So, it's not.
Well, I know, I know a lot of homeless people are on, uh, up for all of them. And, um, I know you guys took care of all that. The child was quiet and so was everybody else, I'm sure. But, um, I just don't want to start from there, you know?
But I'll tell you how successful that is. The governor came to visit. Because it's a model for the state of California. And so, we're very proud of it. And we've done a really good job with it.
Yeah.
Uh, we also monitor it. So, don't think it goes. And the people at Jamboree Housing, they're renowned for successful programs because they administer it. They're, they're right there on site. So, I think we'll be in good hands.
Okay, I hope so. What about the police? Can they go by, go to our Moho Park, please?
Right, right before you leave, I'm gonna introduce you to Chief Walters, who's our chief of the police. And he'll be able to work with you.
Okay, definitely.
They're doing a stellar job. They're just down the street.
Okay, yeah, I know. All right, well, thank you very much.
You're welcome. Thank you for coming.
I'm glad to see you.
Okay, Kathy Harrison, please.
Being somebody that got a call. But I, I called you, remember?
Yeah, Kathy, I return their calls all the time. But somehow, we don't quite hook up. But feel free to call me on my cell anytime.
Okay, again, what, I live in the Moho Park, okay? Years ago, not too many years ago, you used to come, you and the police officer and different ones. We'd come to the Moho Park and talk to the people. We used to have it in the clubhouse about if there was a fire, what to do and just different things. And it was really helpful. And a couple of the older people in there said, Kathy, they never come anymore. Remember, I, I had talked to you.
Yeah, and I got some really good news for you. Now that COVID is over with, we are reinstituting our tables and visits. And we have your facility at the top of the list, which I'm going to discuss with our staff. And so, um, our community, we're getting a new community development director. That person's in charge of that program. She's coming on board around February the 27th. When she's here, we will be scheduling those outreach meetings. Uh, not only will our police and fire and city people be there, our council will be there. You'll get a chance to ask all those questions. You always want to have answers.
Well, it's not, we don't need those people there. We need the fire department. We need the police department.
Okay, well, we're gonna come anyway.
And that's who you, yeah.
Well, I understand.
I mean, these, you know, the police and the fire and all them to tell the people, okay, if mobile homes go up in two minutes, you know that? Okay, the fire department can tell all the people, okay? This happens, this is what to do. I mean, you know, come on.
We'll get on there.
Okay, we're gonna hold you to that too.
I would think so.
Okay, I'll be here in front of you in about a week.
You'll remember, you have my sorties.
About a week, I'll be here in front of you.
Okay, thanks.
Okay. And if you people wanna call me, it's okay.
I will give you her sorties. Okay, is there anyone else who would like to address the council on anything at this time? Okay, I'm gonna close my pen. We are now moving on to great communications. We have that. Mayor, uh, anybody having initiated business? Okay, um, any redans? Tell us about your tech festival experience.
Well, you guys are not yet aware. It is the New Year, New Year for many of us, uh, Asian descent. And there is going to be a, um, fest- festival happening at the OC Fairgrounds this weekend. And I'm certainly probably not coming. So, I'm really excited. I have never been past the, uh, one. I'm actually. I don't need to know the season, I'll be sure.
That's right, sure. Congratulations. Okay, good. So, make sure to get the vision, whatever I'm saying. Okay, um, moving on for, um, we did have a great food drive. It was Saturday. Um, unfortunately, my volunteers were off the tech festival, so it was a struggle. And, um, the cities were closing the bathroom doors, so they were boarded up. But it was very successful anyway. Uh, we did have a great distribution. And, um, again, Stanton is now known for the food, food distribution for the Indian capital of the world, and so works out pretty well. Um, at this point, we're not going to have to, uh, for a jury. Okay, here's your study session. Okay, there's, there's a recommendation I want to make. I thought, I had a chance to actually go through the entire budget for the last few months. And on the budget, we now itemize everything. There's two ways we can do it. Personally, I would think I'm gonna meet with, um, our esteemed finance department and just kind of get a breakdown of the questions on the different expenses. Because I think it's good that maybe Doll or even myself, we still have a lot of money on a lot of different stuff. I think it's good to learn what we're spending a lot. Because sometimes you can read it over and over and still not know where the money goes. I think the other thing that would be very helpful, and I would do ask is, because I always say, is this a one-time expenditure? Is it ongoing expenditure? Do we have to pay that much money every month for something? Is there a differential on what we're paying? I think it, I think it would be good for us to all understand what's a one-time, what we spend every month, where the money's going. Because eventually, even though we're the very number one financially stable city in the state of California, which we can all brag about, I think there's gonna be some dark futures ahead. So, we may have to make some adjustments. So, the better we understand it, the better off we're gonna be. As an example, I was not aware of the fact that that DEMA study or the study for the emergency services is a pro-rata share, but it's a one-time payment. It was like twenty-seven hundred bucks. So, I think things like that is good for us to know those types of things.
Don't we have Open Gav on the website? We would follow the breakdowns. Is that updated?
That's just basically for personnel.
No, it does have budget to actual, it does drill it down. Um, but on the transparency portal, it has the, um, the dollar amount, the budget. If you really wanted to, what I wanted to point out, um, for all those who, um, do down-low budget with, and those recently, obviously, the 22, 23 budget that we're on there. The budget looks broken into four sections. The third section is the budget by department. And it goes in detail by division. And each division has a explanation at the bottom called significant changes, where we do it about two or three sentences for that division. For example, public facilities in the Public Works Department kind of highlight what the biggest fluctuations are between the 21, 22 mid-year budget that got updated last March to what's in the adopted budget. And that kind, we kind of try to delineate what the one-time or what the costs are, obviously, you know, what the significance swings are in there. So, happy to meet with the city manager. The council will go over in detail what other questions you have. But I also wanted to point that out to everyone. Um, the public and the council that we do have that analysis in the third section of the budget by department. And we've always said that the annual adopted operating budget is the most important document for our city staff because that's what council proves. That's the budget we must live within. There's no exception if there is, we come back to the council. Um, so, just as a reminder, in just a couple of months, we'll be reaching out to the council members to have your one-on-one budget previews prior to going into our December 23, 24 budget workshop. You're also going to be getting a mid-year budget report in a couple of weeks as well. Um, and then certainly, we'll, we can spend as much time with each council member if they'd like, going into the details of each department's budget. We actually have them itemized in our internal report tracking. Literally, just as an example, we'll have a publication line item for a hundred dollars. And it will say, "Orange County Register Subscription, fifteen dollars." Only time. So, if you would like to see that report when we adopt our final budget, we can link you with that. And then you can match that against with our register throughout the year to see where that stays. Yeah. Um, and then certainly during that budget development process, we can help highlight recurring costs versus one-time costs. And we do try and help those help. Um, we really try to make sure that any recurring costs are considered when we add to the budget.
You know, the other thing too is I notice that we borrow a lot of things locally, which I think is wonderful. But there's some of the items are redid too. And I'm wondering if we go through, I know a secondary party, is it cheaper, is it cheaper for us to procure it out of the city? Those types of things. You know, we have a new, you guys have done a stellar job with our finances here. And all of course, to be recognized as the top city's fiscal sound of all the words in the country. I mean, we take every city doing charity, we're number one. I mean, that's something to brag about, from fiscal point of view. I just want to make sure that we maintain that and we help you any way we can. You know, sometimes when we go through some things like that, we might find something, or they, or the council might have a suggestion. How would we save a little money? You just never know. But I think, uh, I think you've done a great job. Otherwise, we're ready to crack the award. I mean, look, Brett, can't you be number one in that category? How hard that is? And nobody, the policemen, if I tell them, but they all say, "Oh, like a little bit." That's right. Anyway, thank you for showing, you guys did a great job.
Thank you.
Because Zinnia put my all the props to Hollywood. You're welcome.
The worst Hollywood car in life.
I know. The funny thing about most of her stuff, it always has a minus sign up front. It means that she must have got donations or give up on your worth. All right, now our C, the turn.
Thank you, Mayor Council, I'm Brian.
Okay, and of course, Hannah.
You know why?
Okay, great. Okay, now, I can say it's now my favorite agency tonight because OC always got here, thank God. Chief, you guys are doing such a great job. I ran into four of your deputies on Saturday night in Adventure City. And I had a long talk with them. And they are very pleased with what's going on in our town. They're very pleased with the fact that you have all of us supporting them. And they know that. And I made this trip, I let them know that we always have their back. And I think that the exuberance and the positive attitude of those deputies was a wonderful experience. And I think that you've done a marvelous job, Chief. Um, and, um, again, let your whole department know that things were made in that bad, big leaps. But we're gonna come up and help you even more. And thank you for appearing, Chief. So, thank you.
Yes, sir. So, the nice part was I got called, um, during the weekend by the deputies. There was a gang chief. We talked to the mayor and, uh, we talked to, and we got to have some questions. And he got to talk to us. And so, it's kind of one of those communication things that him, that we are out there. Um, and it's kind of a, it's a different, it's a different, I think, atmosphere right now for, you know, I think for Stanton Police Services. There's a lot of positivity here and it's really looking to work. So, I think we're gonna continue to do that. Okay? Uh, so, for, I'll be covering, um, the month of December stats for Stanton Police Services. Uh, December alone was extremely busy, um, for the deputies, for investigators, for sergeants. Um, as, as we responded to 1,202 calls per service, and that's an average of fifty-one per day. That's up by, uh, ten calls per service. And the calls per service aren't just theft or anything like that. They're kind of high profile. There's sexual assault, others, you know, uh, you know, there's robbery, uh, there's murder. So, it's definitely gone up, uh, compared to last, you know, compared to November. Uh, so, that was, that's something, you know, we did see. Uh, but we also, um, you know, when they were not being assigned calls for service, they also observed three hundred and eighty-three violations a lot in the act of appropriately, you know, uh, you know, with citations or taking people to jail. Uh, deputies made thirty-nine arrests. Uh, there was eleven felony bookings, five misdemeanor bookings, fourteen warrant arrests and nine DUI bookings. Uh, deputies also issued thirty-one, um, misdemeanor citations. Um, since our motor's back, which is fantastic, he is, he's got full motion in his hand, so that's good. Um, he issued 291 traffic citations in our areas where there was a lot of traffic accidents based on our statistical data, also by the schools. Uh, so, he's, it seems to be, um, I've seen him on the last two weeks in the same areas every day, uh, pulling up the same cars. And it's just fantastic that he's, and it's, he's by the schools, one of those high-traffic areas. Uh, so, it's just fantastic. Um, our gang, they arrested one documented gang member for a total of 2022, in, in 2022, they arrested 25, uh, for various crimes. Uh, for the enforcement, uh, for the month of December, uh, uh, there were five rapes, there were six robberies, seventeen violent assaults, uh, ten burglaries, thirty-four thefts. And, uh, there were eleven stolen vehicles. Um, in the month of December, uh, the Stanton investigators, um, they were given a total of, um, eighty-eight, uh, twelve cases. This is something I really wanted to, you know, kind of bring to the board was that, um, out of those eighty, thirty-six are currently open, they actually closed fifty-two. Um, that is, that's unheard of. Um, we have two outstanding investigators. There's only two of them. Um, and they just, uh, again, um, it's a team camaraderie, um, you know, and they do a really good job. And that's a, that's a big case to close. I, I, you know, want to formally thank them. Our special enforcement team, again, again, extremely busy. Uh, they made eighteen arrests, uh, ten felonies, um, eight misdemeanors. They contacted twenty homeless and all twenty declined services. Um, they contacted, uh, twenty-five probationers, uh, ten parolees, twelve prostitutes, and they recovered, um, uh, two stolen vehicles. They also wrote five search warrants, uh, you know, for various types of crimes.[1739.81] They also wrote five search warrants, uh, uh, you know, for various types of crimes, um, and they helped with investigators as well. And like, you know, like I said earlier, the two investigators are, you know, kind of overwhelmed right now, so our special enforcement team was able to help them, uh, which goes back to that team camaraderie. Our new homeless liaison, uh, uh, the pilot program update. It's been a, um, I've been extremely happy, uh, with the way that, um, I think the communication, I think with the homeless outreach coordinators, uh, and code enforcement on the daily activities. Um, I haven't seen that communication, it's in my nineteen-year career. Um, watching that group work together, um, is something truly special. I think I just want to, you know, you know, I think over the last six weeks, and I think that shows, um, it's very successful. I think we're doing a good job, and I, I know the cities get some updates on that. Uh, but like I said, from my standpoint, um, there's more services being offered right now than there has before. And I think the city's looking a lot better as well. Um, so with that, our response times, uh, uh, party calls, uh, uh, for, um, party twos is eighteen minutes, twenty-nine seconds. Party threes is thirty-two minutes, thirty-six seconds. And a party one calls is four minutes and forty-nine seconds. Uh, still very, very good. Um, for the update, I want to thank, uh, you know, the city staff, uh, for, you know, for being great partners, both CSD. Um, I think the working relationship is really good, and it's actually, I think, pretty fun. Uh, which I know is kind of a, that's kind of a weird word to say, but it's, it's enjoyable coming over here and, and working with all the city staff, so thank everybody for that. Um, thank you to the city manager, Detective Ray Yale, for allowing the Stanton substation to be, um, you know, um, better like halls. Um, the front of the station, in the back parking lots, the best it's ever looked in, well, I think in my nineteen-year career. Um, it's lit up, um, the safety's there, and looks really nice. Um, so I want to say thank you to that. Um, I think the Christmas lighting ceremony, I think was a big success. I think the Grinch, um, I think as well, Santa Claus was a big hit for the kids. Um, and just on, uh, I think on the last thing, Deputy Fisher, um, worked on the east side of the week, he just got promoted to sergeant. And he's now assigned, uh, to the Lacey Jail. Uh, so again, um, that's a big deal, I'm very excited about that. I couldn't get in here tonight because he's actually working, uh, so I just want to pass it on to the city council. Uh, but this concludes my presentation. I'm happy to answer any questions.
Tell Asher Bunsen if he takes any more of our good guys. I'd like a substitute for him when he's not at the island pool.
Okay.
So I just take Any questions? Yes, sorry, Carol.
Sorry, I keep forgetting the fact that I'm so impressed with our police department. There are these terrible car shows that go on all the time. And they race around, they tear up the blacktop, they sell drugs, they sell illegal fireworks during the summer. I, they're just a bad, bad environment, they're a bad event. And our police team has just run them out of the city. And I mean, more than once. And other cities, sometimes the police just don't show up at all. And I'm sure those poor businesses there are getting staffed, their parking lots are getting ripped up, and I mean, it's just a, it's a bad group. And, um, they're starting to come to Stanton less and less. They know that, um, we're gonna be right there on top of them and run them out of town. So I just wanted to thank our police team. I know it's just a small part of what you do, but I'm so impressed with that while you guys have done it.
Yes, sir, absolutely.
Jamie, you guys have done an outstanding job also. I think, um, I think the symbiosis, it's nice to have somebody that, that's, that is, uh, willing to work with you, but also willing to make any adjustments. Um, I think one of the things that I think, that I've seen is that when you need help, they're there for you. And to me, that makes all the difference if I'm a city employee. And so I think that's a part of our overall program. Um, I'm gonna go ahead and make the announcement tonight that I'm going to be getting a sponsor, and we are working on a public safety luncheon to thank our public safety, our first responders, our police, our power, and our staff for the great job we did last year. Um, it's probably lobster and steak. Um, so we can shake that, maybe a hamburger and a piece of shrimp, but we're gonna have a really good time. So anyway, um, just have that to look forward to. It's my way of, uh, thanking you for the great job you've done. And of course, yeah, our council will be there to give that right to you. Okay, any other business for us? Okay, get ready to remind and stay warm.
Good night, Mr. Taylor. Thank you.